[S01]...
We all here? Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First, I want to apologize for making you all wait here. We were heavily in discussion in executive session, but if you will please rise and I'd like to invite Reverend Griff Volier up to give our invocation this morning.
Thank you. Almighty God, our Creator and Sustainer, hear our prayer. Once again, our county supervisors convene to do the business of our county, and once again, they turn to you for the wisdom, discernment, and ability to meet the challenges of governing our area in these trying times. As they hear the various items mentioned in today's agenda, we ask that you grant them superior understanding of the issues involved and guide them to the best solutions that will benefit our people. You have promised in your word that if any of us lacks wisdom, we should ask of God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to us. We now claim that promise for our Board of Supervisors. Please grant your blessing upon them this morning. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Supervisor Watson?
If you'll follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Reverend, who's, I know it's a long wait, but the Reverend's voter is actually the man who's been, has made it his people available, have been coming here to give the wonderful invocations every, every meeting, and I want to thank you very much for that. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on September 2nd, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any committee and/or legislative reports?
Madam Chair, US Department of Transportation had a national town hall. US Transportation Secretary Anthony Fox hosted the town hall meeting and was answering questions about long-term transportation solutions and funding. He mentioned that Congress approved a short-term pass for transportation before they went for the recess. It is the 28th short-term passage of transportation funding in the last six years. He explained how these short-term funding solutions are not what local and state governments need. He said they need a long-term solution. It costs millions of dollars to build new roads and bridges. With the short-term solution, these major projects are not getting done because there is no certainty that the money will be there in the future. By 2015, the Department of Transportation predicts there will be two times freight traveling through the US. When the interstate system was first created 50 years ago, it wasn't intended to last beyond 50 to 60 years without major improvements. According to Fox, new policies need to be put in place and permanent funding must be allocated to fix this growing problem. Fox is one of the authors of the Grow American Act that he said could be used as a blueprint for legislation. The Act focuses on three things: highways, rail, and commuter transportation. Currently, the highway use of revenue funds focus on just highways and commuter transportation. He feels it should include rail, but it should be up on the local, up to the local government, not the feds, to decide if the community needs more rail or commuter money. Fox also feels that the process to receive permits for projects needs to be streamlined. He has picked some very complex projects totaling $5 million to test using a new streamlined system. The results were the permitting being issued in 13 to 15 months versus three to five years. In the permit process, DOT must review an application and send it up to half a dozen other agencies like the stair-step fashion. Fox wants to see the process changed so that agencies can look over the project at the same time and not have to wait for another agency to get done with their review. Also, NACO hosted a webinar on unaccompanied children crisis. It was done by Julie Rodriguez. She's the deputy director of public engagement for the White House, and she spoke about what the administration is doing. She mentioned that the Department of Health and Human Services has partnered with over 90 private shelters in 15 different states to provide over 7,000 beds for the unaccompanied children. These shelters are given a grant to help pay for the expenses. The department was hoping for $3.7 billion supplement to this year's appropriation amount, but Congress recessed without passing the bill. Julie went over the process of what happens to a child once they come to one of the shelters. The children are given a wellness exam, and any diseases or illnesses they may have must be treated. They're also vaccinated. The Office of Refugee Resettlement, which is operated by the Health and Human Services, reimburses the private shelters for these costs. The children usually spend no more than 30 days in a shelter. The department works to find these children's sponsors or to place them with relatives they already have residing in the US. Their sponsors or relatives are given the help they need to get them through the immigration process. Julie did mention briefly that some funding is being prioritized to county sheriffs and child protective services for the cost associated with these crises. Head Robert Weiner, a gentleman that we, we pay some money to in Washington, DC, asked him to give us an update on secure rules, schools, payment law tactics, active management, and he sent back saying, basically, a three-legged stool approach, first being the overall, or being overall strategy is, he's instigated a PILT-SRS active management fly-in for the week of September 15th. We'll be asking several of you to come to Washington to help lobby for our agenda. We want to catch Congress before it escapes for the fall break and the elections in November. Both NACO and the National Forest Counties and school coalitions have recently suffered losses as their key lobbyists, people with whom I have historically worked in a team effort to gain your PILT and SRS payment. In light of that, he's asked Ron Walter, Chelan County, Washington, Chairman of NACO's Public Lands Committee, along with our own Alan Gardner from Washington County, Utah, who serves as a NACO Subcommittee Chair, to instruct NACO's remaining staff to organize our annual PILT fly-in to provide travel money for a select group of commissioners to come to Washington, DC to educate eastern members of Congress who simply do not understand PILT, SRS, or active management and why they are linked. We will also meet with congressional aides who better understand these programs to find out details about their legislative strategies and how they intend to provide next-year payment. This isn't in there, but if you don't know, you know, we lost our liaison for public lands, was then replaced by Mr. Wolf, who has since been let go, so we're actually running with nobody at the head of Public Lands Committee. He talked about linkage is linked to the secure rules, schools, forest county funding, and SRS is linked to active national forest management. Here's how. First of all, House and Senate Republicans will not support ongoing SRS payments without passage of an active management bill. The House has passed such a bill, which I helped Congress Hastings, Chairman of the National Resource Committee, put together and which passed the full House last September. The Senate has yet to take up the House-passed bill or come up with its own alternative bill, despite repeated requests of many of us to finance Chair Wyden of Oregon and new Natural Resources Committee Chair Mary Landreau. Put another way, House and Senate Democrats seem willing to fund SRS and PILT but are balking on reopening the National Forest to active management. House and Senate Republicans refuse to simply continue to make payments to counties without having reopened the National Forest for commercial timber harvesting. We support the view that active management of our National Forest is a must because of the long-term health of the forests across America. It will create private sector economic jobs and to produce tax revenue for local governments. It will also prevent catastrophic fires. Remember, the timber production from the National Forest lands has dropped from 12 billion board feet in 1990 to 2 billion board feet in 2013. The Forest Service budget is 2.3 billion per acre, while receipts from these 2 billion board feet timber sales were only 180 million, less than 10% of the Forest Service budget. This is an unattainable situation. The impacts on PILT, if SRS were to go away and not be funded, counties with historically produced large amounts of timbers would no longer deduct these SRS payments, so-called prior year payments, under the PILT Act from their PILT payments and would be rightfully entitled to receive their full PILT funding. PILT dollars would thus flow from counties in the Rockies back to the counties in the Pacific Northwest. Reductions in PILT would range from 20 to 40% from Rocky Mountain counties, unlike Utah, Colorado, and a few other states would set up special service districts to get around this problem. Washington, Oregon, California have not established such programs, and it occurred the full SRS prior payment deduction from PILT, all of which would provide additional funds for counties outside of timber. In sum, he is working with to help NACO's remaining staff organize a fly-in to DC for mid-September, which NACO will only pay a part, probably two persons per state. He will keep pressure on Congress to deal with reopening the National Forest and work to commit Congress to act on SRS PILT payments as the only full-time lobbyist here in DC devoted to doing this. He's very appreciative of our ongoing support at a very critical time for counties. He's addressed all three legs of the stool long-term. He continues to work congressional leaders, identify sources of revenue. And while I had him, I asked him to give us a brief overview of the new ozone regulations, how it could affect us. According to the new study out this week, National Association of Manufacturers Administration's anti-coal campaign in the form of ozone regulations will cost the American economy 2.9 million jobs and $270 billion annually. The new regulation is the single most expensive regulation in history. Nothing comes close. And then look out for those costs on the sage grouse listing. It gets worse. Prominent doctors Julian Goodman and Sonya Sax wrote recently in the Wall Street Journal that there's no evidence that replacing the current standard with this new one would improve public health. In 2008, the EPA said that the ozone standard in effect at the time protected public health and federal court ruled to that effect. The facts show that the ozone qualities across the nation have decreased by 25% since 1980, as the economy has tripled. Emissions of six of the most common air pollutants have declined by 72% since the government started regulating utilities. The point is that the existing Clean Air Act, cumbersome though as it is, is working. Finally, for the nation's electric ratepayers, the administration's effort to force the nation's electric utility and boilers to move forward and move away from coal has raised the average cost of electricity from 11 cents per kilowatt hour in 2008 to 15 cents today. And that is before these new proposed ozone regulations have taken effect. Expect the price of electricity to double if the new regs are allowed to be implemented. Note that the petroleum industry and the NAM are working in tandem to get this information out to the public in order to ironically save one of API's competitors, the coal industry. Administration has united business and industry the likes of which he's never seen during his years in Washington, DC. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And just to add to that, to that great report, which is 100% correct, Mojave Electric down in Bullhead City has been very vocal and active in fighting the new EPA regulations. And I have a bunch of these forms that is for the public to fill out. They do look at these things. I'll leave them in back of the room, and if you would take one, fill them out, and mail them, it would be most helpful. I do have several here, but I can get more, and I will make them available to all the supervisors and at the different districts in our offices. Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Do we have a county administrator's report?
No report today, Madam Chairman.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting.
So moved.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we're off to the call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request-to-speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on the future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Steve Robinson. Come on down.
My name is Steve Robinson. I live at 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Chairman Angus, Supervisor Steph, I have a couple, three questions. Well, I have a list of 14 questions, but I'm certainly not reading them all now. But I want to touch on two major questions I have, and I will forward on these other questions to you. In 2004, it was stated during budget hearings that the contingency fund was finally up over 10%. However, and that there was a debate at that time whether the contingency fund should be as much as 15 to 20%. Supervisors Johnson and Byers argued against that at that time. Last year, it showed only $950,000 contingency fund, when in fact, there was over $13.4 million in the general fund. So I'm wondering why was there not, and this year, it only shows a $5 million contingency fund, and we're not fully reporting the full amount of reserves, and that's my first question for you. Secondly, over the last six years, the HERF Fund, originally at the beginning of 2009 fiscal year, showed a $7 million reserve fund according to the Treasury's report. Since that time, that fund has more than doubled, and we just finished the current fiscal, last fiscal year with over $14.4 million in the content, we're in the reserve fund carried forward. During that time, we've gone from over 90 of staffed personnel to about 50% or 45% drop over the seven, or over the six years. Also, we've gone from 25 motor graders servicing the roads of our county. Also, we've gone from 25 motor graders servicing the roads of our county, but we've dropped that by 30% down to 19. Living in Golden Valley, I know what the roads are like. So my frustration and my concern is, why has there been such a huge drop, even in the face of HERF monies being swept from the county, about a million, million and a half a year? Why have we built up, doubled the reserve fund while fully funding all 90 positions, only filling 50 positions? I have a hard time with that. And I think because of the citizens of our county wanting their roads adequately maintained, I think you should take a close look at that and see why we're not funding, we're not filling these positions and having the adequate equipment to meet the needs.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, if you forward me your 14 questions, I will do my best to get you the answers.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak for the call to public? Seeing none, I close the call to public. Right now, we do have a couple of presentations. I think I will go forward. Do we want the whole, is anyone taking pictures? Oh, okay. Come on. For the whole. We have a couple really good employees who've been receiving some prestigious awards per spot. Okay. Arizona Building Officials, 2014, Building Inspector of the Year. And I see this man every day with his briefcase going in, Mr. Sam Ishak. Congratulations. Next up, we have Sonya Klaub, the Arizona Building Officials, 2014, Award of Merit. That's awesome. Makes healthy look tall. Thank you very much.
You know, I want to, I want to take just a little moment to, and if Nick wants to say anything, we do have some, we're always winning awards in this county. I don't think we promote it as much as we should, but we have a great staff that does great work, and when they're honored from these bigger organizations, it really means a lot. And I want to really thank you very much for all the hard work you do.
Okay, now we're on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items five to 33, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Does anybody have any items they wish to pull? No. Anyone?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-nine.
Twenty, say it again, 24?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-nine.
Okay. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and 29. I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda, accepting items 23, 24, and 29.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Items 23, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Mojave County Library District, approve revised standards of acceptable library behavior policy, as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee on July 28, 2014.
Madam Chair, the questions I had, I see what, basically what they have here is the, you know, the library director's here or not. They're taking out the no-weapon policy and putting nothing in its place. Should it be to make it more, to make it clearer for people that weapons are permitted? Should we have something in there so that nobody has a doubt?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, members of the Board, the thought was that we were trying to mirror what Mojave County had done. We could not find any specific policy that had been put in place at the time that the weapons.
Okay, that was the only question I had, I didn't know if that was clear or not, if it's not in there. I understand.
I think I can follow up to this, Supervisor Johnson. The, back from last year's discussion, the decision was made that in the county records, we would not comment on a weapons policy pro or con, instead leaving citizens to their statutory and constitutional rights. If they choose to exercise them, that's their right. They choose not to exercise them, that's their right. The county is taking no position one way or the other. And that was, I think, based upon manners of good policy. We shouldn't be telling you guys what to do, or even suggesting it, really. And secondly, it's also from a liability issue in that the county's not authorizing anything. It's truly the state legislature and the state constitution which is authorizing.
Thank you. The other question I would have is, in our regulations, we have about people who soil our furniture and soil our rugs. Are we going to start actively doing that? I don't have a suit, we just had to redo the carpet because of people that, it talks about odors and that sort of thing. I've been in the library where there's people that have come in and sit in the same chairs that other people won't even sit in, because these people reek to high heaven, and they've destroyed the furniture and made it impossible for the tax-paying people to use it. Are we going to start enforcing these rules we have?
Supervisor Johnson, I believe that we do enforce the rules. We do have security guards, we have staff. It is very difficult to uniformly enforce the rules. You know, I believe that there's been many times that I've been in that library, and I too smell an odor, but it isn't necessarily where we, you would expect it's coming from. Often, it's some of our seniors who possibly are not cared for as well as we would hope.
I think the ones that I'm seeing are transients that are going in, and they're using it for the entire time the library is open, which is making it hard for other people. I'm not sure legally if we have the ability to say, you know, this isn't a senior center, this isn't a daycare center, we're not putting people up for the entire day to come in there to scare off other people, because it does scare off people that Washington dropped their children off and stuff with some of these transients. But I think it's just something we need to look at in our areas. That's all. I'd make a motion to approve item number 23.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Number 24, sitting as the Board of Directors for Mojave County Library District, accept the recommendations of the Library Citizens Advisory Committee, made by unanimous vote at the July 28, 2014 meeting, to acknowledge receipt and accept the Mojave County Library District Kingman Branch Library Expansion Needs Assessment Report dated June of 2014.
Madam Chair, I pull this, I wondered if the Board might be interested in hearing.
Yeah, very interested. Just to, a little background, last year, the library, come on up, came up and they wanted $60,000 to do a needs assessment concerning the expansion or building of a new library in Kingman. And we voted not to give that 60,000, but instead to try doing the needs assessment in the House, and I guess now we're going to hear the report.
Thank you, Chairman Angus and members of the Board. Library staff was tasked with conducting a needs assessment to determine the current and long-term need for efficient and functional space to support public library services desired by the public in the Kingman area. The assessment included the gathering of demographics, statistical data. We compared, did comparisons with our other two branch libraries, the, in Mojave County. We got public input via library survey and a series of focus groups. The current Kingman Library was built in 1991. It's 15,000 square feet, which is more than 50% smaller than our other two libraries, the ones located in Lake Havasu City and in Bullhead City. The current library is 23 years old. It's overcrowded, it's underpowered. The building lacks sufficient data points for both power and data for either current needs or future needs. The lighting's inadequate, and there's insufficient space for library programming or meetings. In short, the community's outgrown the facility. In addition, we have offices next door in a modular building that houses administration, technical services, and support functions for IT, for community libraries, and for our outreach and bookmobiles. And that building, too, has a number of issues. Participants in the various focus groups and respondents to the library survey were clear in their desire for additional space for computer users, for children, for teens, as well as for more meeting space and programming space, and dedicated quiet space for both study and reading. So after looking at all of the information that we gathered and doing an analysis and looking at our projected funding levels, the recommendation is that the current library be expanded by about 20,000 square feet, which would give us a total of about 35,000 square feet to house both the public library and the administrative functions.
I have a question, Madam Chair. You said 91, it was built with 15,000 square feet. Haven't there been updates since then?
There have not been updates in square footage. There have been some, you know, little remodeling type things.
And what was the cost of those little remodeling type things?
I'm sorry, I don't have that. I do know that once the, I can't tell you what it was when we had the flood about a little over a year ago. They did have to go in and do re-carpeting and, you know, did some changes and, of how things were, things that were damaged in that flood.
I don't know, does Public Works remember? Because I remember we did, there was a lot of money spent on, I'm just trying to get it so that we know, have all the facts, because one thing that happened was, it went without the Public Works oversight, and something you don't think about when you're doing something, which the library didn't think about, was that the floors have to carry a heavier load. So we had to go back in and redo that. Do you remember that, Mr. Latauski?
Hi, good morning, Supervisors. Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, I do not have a specific accounting of the improvements that Public Works undertook with regard to the emergency response with the fire water break at the building. I do recall that that particular repair remediation did exceed, I believe, $100,000, but purely to address the flooding situation and to restore the fire suppression system.
I don't know if you've looked at it, but I know we had to go in there and redo the flooring, because it wasn't set for the loads of the books. Will an expansion, will we have to do away with that, or is an expansion a better idea than just building a whole new building?
Madam Chairman? Possibly, I could answer that for Supervisor Johnson. I think what Supervisor Johnson's referring to is, there was a modular facility that was brought in for administration, and that modular facility was quite large, and it was done solely by the library, by the library district, and Public Works wasn't involved in that. It was later found that they wanted to store, store books, heavy things in the modular, and the floor didn't have the loading requirements for that particular application. Also, I believe with any new proposal, you're actually looking at not utilizing that old, old ugly modular facility and trying to upgrade the whole thing. But that's about the time, Supervisor Johnson, that Public Works started getting involved with the library. And it was, it was a service that we were glad to provide and able to provide.
And I think just for the Boards that remain, it's something we need to have Public Works involved in all these other departments, so that they don't go off and miss things that our people would do. I guess with the survey, a lot of places are going to digital now, digital libraries. Did you look into this? Because it's obviously more cost-effective. It's, so it saves our taxpayers money, plus it's easier for the people to download these things. It saves on us on collections, the books last, obviously, digital lasts for pretty much ever.
Yes. Though that is a direction that we have been moving, Supervisor Johnson. And when we were looking at this, we did not add any more space for the collections, the physical collections, because there is the trend for the downloadable items, which is, you know, the direction that we're moving.
And then with, so we're going from 15,000 square foot to 30-some thousand square foot, and we're not adding more space for books. Is that something the Board needs to look at to see? Because I noticed that in the libraries now, they're getting away from being libraries, they're going to be gathering centers. When they're talking about, we need more space for meetings, the teens need a room, all these people, maybe that's something the Board needs to look at. Or did your advisory council, when they gave this unanimous vote, did they look at that, saying, we're changing the focus from libraries to now more of meeting places?
Well, Supervisor Johnson, libraries now are more than just books. They're computers, they're meeting places, they are tutoring places, they are more than just books. So yes, that's something that the Citizens Advisory Committee has looked at all along. You know, libraries have been evolving for almost 300 years, and whatever the need is, that's what we're trying to do. You know, literacy, tutoring, computers, job help, all of those kinds of things. It's no longer only checking out books.
And I guess that's something maybe the Board needs to take a look at, and see if that's the direction we want to go in, because like, job help and those sorts of things, not that we don't want to do that, but we do have departments in the county that do that, so in case we're doubling up on taxing, I mean, it's just something I think I'd like to have the Board take a look at. That's all, Madam Chair.
I have a question, Madam Chair, or a couple of questions really quickly. And by the way, first, I want to compliment you and your staff and the friends of the library for this wonderful report that they put together.
Thank you.
It was very detailed, and I appreciate that. I noticed that you're proposing to go to roughly a, I mean, I'm talking of very round figures here, 60,000 square foot library in Kingman, and what, no, I'm getting that wrong?
35 total.
35 total, and 29, because I thought I saw, when I went down below, that there was roughly 29,000 of non-public area of this library and 30,000 of public. Am I misreading that?
Yes.
Okay. Let me find that page for you if I can.
Yes, it is page 19.
19. Thank you. Is that where they have the chart laying out the uses, and they get the totals at the bottom?
Yes, it's total public square foot areas, 26, about 27,000 square feet, and then for administrative, we're at about 7,500, totaling the 34.
There, that is correct. So when I, when I'm in public square foot, I interpret that as being meeting rooms, books, et cetera.
Correct.
And then you have, okay, I see. So 30, I did misread that, and I do apologize. Of the 34,000 square feet, then, all but 5,000 and give or take is going to be public space for checking out books, computers, et cetera.
Well, it also would house the staff that, the work space.
The outside staff that engages with the public.
Right.
Okay. Now, I noticed that the Bullhead Library is at 31,000 square feet, and the Lake Havasu Library is at 32,000 square feet.
Correct.
How much of that is non-public for each of those two cities?
They're, they are very, because part of this is that we're also putting administration in here. So with the administrative offices, we're ending up with quite a bit less public space than in the other two libraries. We're taking into account the trend away from physical collections, so that's part of the reason it's smaller. And then we've also had the, the good fortune to have two other libraries to look at, to be able to look at, you know, we have this at this library, and maybe that's a little bit too much space there. We have that at that library, maybe we need a little bit more there. So we were able to use that experience to come up with this.
And I think you misunderstand where I'm coming from, and that's my fault, not yours. I very much approve of what you're proposing here. Okay, so let's get that off. I'm not critiquing this at all. I'm not making any suggestions. I think you and your group did an outstanding job.
Okay.
I'm trying to anticipate future needs down the years.
Got it.
Because if there's going to be 29,000 square feet of public space in Kingman, and the circulation numbers are very similar, adjusting for the month of January that you folks lost, in Havasu and Bullhead, that means we're going to have, we should know going into this that we're going to have to readdress the Bullhead City and the Lake Havasu City space issues, because I believe a significant number of their space is non-public by when I took my tours of those, the back rooms and all the rest of that.
Yes.
And you don't have to, if you just send me an email breaking it down to me for some time, I'd really appreciate that.
I can do that.
Okay.
So you want to know what is staff space, what is public space?
And if you can put it in the format very similar to what you've given us on page 19, that would be very helpful.
Happy to.
And thank you for correcting my reading. I did miss that line. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have it up there. Can you also give us, Supervisor Moss, part of a good thing, the amount of usage of the three major libraries?
Certainly, it is in this report.
Right, well, for the public.
You want it updated?
Yeah, just for the public here, we're talking about it, so they have an idea of exactly what the usage is.
Okay.
I believe they provided circulation numbers, and they're all roughly 250,000, give or take, a few thousand circulation. I think, believe that's the books that are being checked out.
Correct.
Now, that's lower in Kingman, but only because of the flood, they were shut down for a little over a month, so.
I guess the difference would be, what are the numbers that come in? Because circulation, are you counting circulation with bookmobile? Does that get transferred to one person or not, or to one location?
In what we did here, we only did the three large, the three branch libraries. We did not include any bookmobile in this report.
Right. As far as, like you're saying with Supervisor Moss saying we have 200,000, what is the average daily count in our three libraries, the people that usage?
The number of people through the door?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's, let me find it in here. Again, I don't have the average daily, but in 2012, 13, Kingman was closed for that month. They had 176,500 in the door of the year. Bullhead City had 247,000, and Lake Havasu had 249,000 people. Use the, come in the doors.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, again, I want to thank you. We gave you a big task last year. It was sort of unprecedented. We saved some money, and you came through brilliantly. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve, item 24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, number 29. Redeem the waivers for the applicants who missed the March 1st deadline, so they will be eligible for a property tax exemption for the 2014 year per ARS 42-11153B.
Madam Chair, if I may, is anybody from the assessors here? I guess the reason I brought this up, we do this, we did it last meeting, and we've historically done it up until, you know, what point do we stop doing something that's a deadline in March?
Yeah.
And here we are in August. I mean, a deadline should be a deadline, and we want to help these people, but I don't know, maybe if Attorney Exstrom can give us an opinion on when's a deadline a deadline, or when should we draw something off? Because people obviously aren't following the rules.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I'm not sure whether the statute has a deadline in it. I would assume a year, but I'd have to look that up.
Right. Because I think it's March is the deadline for doing this.
I mean, for the extensions.
Oh, for the extension. But should we just continue this till the next time, till we find out?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue this till the next board meeting.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, public hearings. I'm going to open the public hearing for number 34. Discussion on possible action regarding consider amended Mojave County ordinance 2013-03, pawn shop fees and its associated fee schedule, border supervisor resolution 2013-025, to require a 40 cent fee for each reportable transaction. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak to this? Okay, hearing seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. Anyone like to discuss?
Madam Chair, I have a question. We just raised this fee about a year ago, and I'm just wondering why that fee isn't enough and why it needs to be increased. And a little background on that, if we could hear from Lieutenant Sonier.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. What we're looking at here is, we did a 40 cent fee for all new transactions last year. Staff stated that that would come up and pay the 17,246, I think it is, annual subscription fee. We came up considerably short. In the documents that I provided you folks, it was roughly $2,000 short. And what we ended up having to come up with is, through this year, we had to go and extend out a...the actual income generated from the fee for July 2013 through April of 2014 was 12,625. At the end of the fiscal year, we were at $14,929, $2,316 short of the subscription fee. And what we're looking to do is, based on the math that I've completed, gathering that this will take effect October 1st, the bill comes due in June of 2015. The fees from the pawn shops are not due for May until June 28th to us. So in order to have the funds available, 40 cents for each transaction, which now, instead of going for just new transaction, which when people go in and pawn the same item over and over, we weren't getting the funds for, now we would get the 40 cents.
So who is this fee passed on to? Is that passed on to the person that is pawning the item?
It can be.
It is.
The statute allows the fee to be passed on to the person who is actually pawning the item.
Okay, I guess, I guess my concern is that people, for the most part, go to the pawn shops as a last resort when they're desperate financially in their households. And it just seems like this is another burden put on the poor at their worst time. And I'm just wondering, is there not an area within your budget where you could make up this difference without passing it on to the unfortunate that have to go to the pawn shop?
When this was presented last year, it was presented as to be able to fund itself. And that's all we want, is the money to pay the subscription price. You know, a prime example of how good it does, within the last month, we took a burglar or theft of a high-dollar watch. It was valued at over $3,000. Deputy did a good investigation, got up and was able to get good identifiers for it. About a week and a half, two weeks later, Detective Division doing the check of the Leeds Online System, found the watch, notified the deputy, went to the pawn shop, recovered it, and it's back in the hands of the victim.
Okay.
And that's, that's what it does for us, and that's what we're looking to continue.
I understand the benefit to law enforcement, and I don't disagree with that. It's a good tool to use, but it seems like we're hurting our small business owners and our poor folks. And I don't know if the good overweighs the bad that that might do, so that's just my thoughts.
I have a question for the deputy, if I may.
Sure.
I had the misfortune of having a friend who ran a pawn shop 10, 15, 20 years ago, and so I got to sit there on some Saturdays and see these transactions. And I noticed that a lot of folks would come in, and they wouldn't redeem the pawn goods. Instead, they'd pay the fee and they would have it go forward again. They'd basically reissue the ticket right then and there. Would this proposed change be part of your each transaction?
Yes. And that's the difference between what we did last year and this year.
So, but that new transaction then, the second transaction, really, in my opinion, serves no law enforcement purpose, because it's already been checked. Am I right about that?
Yes.
I mean, it's already been checked. We're just looking to use that new transaction as an additional revenue generator to support the entirety of the program.
Correct.
Okay.
The other option would be, we would have to significantly increase the new transaction to a fee that we haven't really looked at. It should be probably around a dollar for each new transaction in order not to do that.
Okay. We went through this last year. It was a pretty hotly contested debate, and we had a lot of the pawn shop owners. And at the time, I was not happy even voting yes on it. So to think that we're going to do it again, because for whatever reason, we didn't match it, maybe our numbers, or maybe it was our fault, we didn't come up with the right numbers. It doesn't seem like a great amount of money. I suggest that you look through your budget and find it somewhere else, because I'm, I'm not going to support this fee.
I have a question, Chairman.
Sure.
Yes, Officer, did you make contact with any of the pawn shop owners or managers in this recommendation?
All of them were notified. I've been contacted by two. One was against it, Amber out of Havasu, I'm not sure of her last name. And then the one here in Kingman contacted me just to clarify what we were looking to do.
One here in Kingman?
Yes. Rosalda.
I think we have four or five, don't we?
Right. That's the only ones that contacted me in reference to this.
Have they been notified?
Yes, they have. All of them were sent notification of this specific public hearing to be given an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think I understand what, we asked for this plan to be self-sufficient, and that's what they came to us with, was their, I always thought that was going to be an awfully low amount of money. We can ask the sheriff to absorb that cost, but he's just going to come back to the general fund. I think if it, if it's not cost-effective, obviously they're showing a good return on the investment for, or returning people's property. I think the only thing to do is to increase the cost, because that, that's to the people that are using it, instead of the people that are, rest of people in the county.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if you could. What's the value of property that's been returned to people that was caught because of this program? I heard a $3,000 watch.
That was one item. At our last time we spoke about this at the meeting, I don't know if I have those notes here, I went through some of the various ones that we'd recovered. And I don't have that figure in front of me right now, I'm sorry. I would probably have to estimate, based on my recollections, probably between $10,000 and $15,000. There was considerable amount of guns and jewelry.
And I understand that that's very important for the people who had their things taken, but we're, we're spending, am I reading this correctly, $70,000 to recover?
Seventeen.
Seventeen thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
And one thing, this program pays not only for the sheriff's office to participate in this program, it also pays for the cities to participate in it.
Say, excuse me, say that again?
This allows all the law enforcement agencies in the county to participate and have access to the system.
So if need be, the city can come up with some money to make the shortfall as well?
Well, as a result of that, the city, Bullhead, I remember, got rid of their $1 per transaction fee. And I think the city of Kingman also got rid, I think they had a $2 one. So this is assistant to the people in the county. Their costs actually went down with this program. Havasu didn't have one, so those are the only one that, as far as I know, actually got an additional fee.
I just think it's a small amount, and I don't want to put it on the backs of the small business owners or the people who, who use it. It doesn't really, I mean, I, it is good, I guess, if you're the person who has it, but I thought that there were other things in place. It's not like you never, ever caught anybody before you had this Leeds Online, right? There are other things that they do.
It was much more difficult in order to do it.
To make sure I put things in context, and I'm sorry, because I'm trying to get things settled in my mind here, Bullhead City, Havasu, and Kingman are now using our Leeds Online system for free?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and the shortfall in your sheriff's budget to run this program is how much money?
This year was, at the end of the year, I believe, right around $2,000.
Just want to make sure.
Two thousand, three, sixteen.
Doesn't it seem to, that it makes sense to ask Havasu, Kingman, and Bullhead to chip in $700 each and cover the difference, as opposed to passing it to the ultimate consumer? Because they're, they're getting a service for free now that they used to spend a lot of money on it, sounds like.
Well, they didn't spend any money. They, basically what they were doing is they charged the consumer, the end user.
So they did exactly what we're doing here, but they did even more money than what we're doing?
City of Kingman had a $2 transaction fee, and that was every transaction. It was based on ticket. City of Bullhead had $1.
I have nothing further. Thank you, Deputy. Madam Chair, I give it back to you. I'll stop talking.
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Okay, then I'll leave the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we decline to adopt item 34 of the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of declining?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's three to two, or four to one?
Three to, I'm sorry, four to one.
Four to one.
I'm sorry, I should speak up louder when we're doing this vote.
Okay. Onto number 35, to our regular agenda. Adopt the FY 2014-15 tax levies and rates for Mojave County tax authorities, and acknowledge the tax levies for special districts, school districts, and fire districts in accordance with ARS 42-1715 and 42-17254. We do have somebody signed up. Mr. Steve Robinson.
Madam Chair, I haven't moved since I last spoke. When I read last, two weeks ago, it surprised me that the very section of the law that I read that applies to this area is ARS 42-17151, which says, "We shall take into account all restricted and unrestricted unencumbered balances carried forward from the prior fiscal One of the risks that could be, could be faced by the county for not disclosing all these reserves is that somebody could file suit and say, "Since there is another $5.8 million in the account, that the county should lower their tax rate by 34 cents per hundred dollars, since there is actually another $5.8 million." I'm not suggesting or encouraging anyone to do that, but that's my whole point, is that this should have been disclosed, and we, the public has a right to know how much money the county has in setting their levy rates. When I, every fire board, every water board, every special taxing district has to disclose the full amount of the reserves. And I believe that that's my point, and that's why I wanted to make it today again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Okay, so I guess I'm ready. Does anybody want to have anything to say here on the board? Or motion?
I move that we approve item 35 of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 36. Discussion on possible action, appointing a person to the position of Constable, Surbat Precinct.
Madam Chair.
This was continued from our June 23rd. Now, do we need to go into special?
No, Madam Chair, I mean, I'd like to make a motion. I believe that as far as discussion goes, we have an election coming up in nine, 10 days. I think that maybe just to facilitate it, I would make a motion that upon conclusion of the election, we would appoint that person to fill the vacancy and leave it vacant until that time.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
I have one question for Mr. Exstrom. I believe the statute says in a special election that the person who wins that election can take office. If it was for the general, it would be right after the general, but being that there's only one party in this particular election, can that person just be sworn in, or do they have to be appointed?
Madam Chairman, I believe this is not a special election, I think it's a regular election. All the constables come up this year, so it's different, it differs from that other thing.
Oh, this was not a special, okay, I'm sorry.
However, however, the statute's kind of abhor a vacancy, and I think it'd be prudent to appoint somebody after the primary, because there's no one in the general. Assuming that no one files a write-in within the period of time, then you can wait till after the general, and that person would take office immediately after the general election.
Right. Okay, got it. So we have a motion and a second.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number 37. Discussion on possible action, Mojave County capital improvement projects list. This was continued by the board from our June 2nd, 2014, and the June 23rd, 2014 meeting. Discuss? Motion?
I'll open up the discussion on this. I have questions for Mr. Hendricks, if he's, can you, Mike? Okay. I was making sure I had your attention. It looked like you were looking at something else. On the courthouse issue, I read some language in the backup material that looked like the, an idea was to refurbish the downtown area with the courthouse, as opposed to locate it in this complex, this campus. Am I reading that correctly?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss...
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss. We wanted to put into this report, actually, if I may, I requested Public Works Steve Letowski to put together the final report, which you have before you, and I think you did an outstanding job. And I want to thank Steve for the report and the very professional nature that he put this together. Because we believe that there was some discussion either within this community or within the board regarding an opport... Not missing an opportunity to explore the downtown area for a court facility. We wanted to include that option to the Board of Supervisors. And what we said in our report is the opportunity exists to select projects, and there's actually county property that exists downtown. And we talked to Judge Gertler regarding this proposal, and I believe he had some discussion with his people. And he actually doesn't oppose this proposal, even though that there's quite a bit of consideration that needs to occur if we're going to move in this direction. One of the main considerations is to evaluate whether or not the courthouse could be located downtown. And we have a consultant that actually did the need study on the... For the existing proposal for the courthouse, did a revised need study, and if the board so chose to go the direction downtown, what we would strongly recommend from a staff perspective is to go ahead and contract with the same provider, with the same professional services, to evaluate the feasibility of placing the courthouse downtown. We put into this report at the time $30,000. We actually have a quote for this to... For the... From the consultant of $35,000 to evaluate this and evaluate utilities, evaluate any abandonments that would need to occur. And what in essence the proposal would be is to put a brand-new court facility downtown adjacent to the existing courthouse and to include some demolition projects for existing county structures.
Are we talking Arnold Plaza when you say that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just make sure that everyone knows what we're talking about.
And the jail. They're on the table. And then a potential re-restoration on the existing courthouse so that it could be utilized for special occasions and offices.
And the reason I ask that, because I was reading the report, I seem to get a lot of what you're saying. I'm looking at the language that was used and extrapolating from it, so I do appreciate that clarification. This is my view as to capital improvement projects as a whole, okay? And there's many different... All the projects here. Back in roughly 2000, when the quarter cent sales tax was first approved, allegedly the court was up very high at the end of the list. And as time went on, it got pushed back and back and back, and now we have community development services buildings and publics and P&amp;Z buildings and other buildings which are only fractionally full. And when I looked at the revised plan and the potential to keep it in the downtown area, which, you know, I... If that's between... That's one of those issues I leave to the county administration, the sheriff's department, and the courts. You know, you're the professionals involved in that end of things. But I saw the time for construction was again pushed out to the very last. So what we say allegedly, or that's been the theme I've been hearing since 2000, is the most important thing is again being pushed to the end of the line. And that's my personal big beef here. It's either the most important or it isn't. And if it isn't, then I have to question why two through six? How... Why are they so critical on that? So my view on things is, I'd really like to hear from the sheriff's department and the courts if they like this downtown area. I do think it does kill some multiple birds with one stone that we have out there. But I also think, and this is just me reacting based upon prior history, the first dirt that's turned over with a shovel is with the courts before any other dirt gets turned over on any other project. Because otherwise, we're just going to be right back in the same boat come 2020. And we're going to have three more judges we're trying to house, population trends and everything else. It's not being done in the proper sequence, in my opinion. I'm flexible on location.
You done?
Momentarily, yes.
So I want to understand more about this downtown area proposal. So you're saying to remodel the existing court and add on using maybe the jail and Arnold Plaza, making that whole area sort of one big court area? Or are you talking about taking everything down and building new? I just... I'm a little confused.
Madam Chairman, you know, I guess, you know, what's in my mind isn't critical. I've got my own vision of what could happen downtown. Because I'm... I was raised here in Kingman and lived here since I was 10, that courthouse is an important facility for me. And I think it's one of the shining stars of Mojave County, and it certainly needs to be preserved without question, if you ask my personal opinion. And there's nothing better for me than to look at preserving that facility for future. That doesn't mean it's going to be a courthouse. What I would envision as a potential is to build a separate court facility. You would... Could create park areas in between the courthouse and the actual facility. I believe there's sufficient room to build a multi-story court facility that would be 90-plus thousand square foot and accommodate all the needs. And if there were monies available, I would ask that the board look at restoration of that court facility, demolishing of the... Our existing sores downtown Arnold Plaza and the jail, and combining all the projects together into one and possibly utilizing the existing courthouse for ceremonial purposes and for office space. That would be my vision.
Madam Chair, I think... I think the reason that we're not going ahead with the court first, even though they have some of that out there, is we don't have the funding for the court. One thing we have to take into consideration, we can pay for all the other ones right now with our quarter cent sales tax. The courthouse is dependent upon this million and a half that the board decided to set aside every year. And that is dependent upon an election in two years and the election in four years, because anybody who comes in and stops that can stop it and it goes. I think the board, we have these ideas or these projects that we've said, or the majority of the board said they'd like to see go forward. My suggestion would be, once we've decided on these, then we just vote and say, "This is what we're going to go forward with." And then we can decide on what location, like for a court, if, say, the court's number one, it could bring us back all these ideas. We can debate and say where we want a court at, where we don't want a court. I think maybe to get it off-center, we should just decide on what the number one is and go with that.
Well, I have two comments on that, Supervisor Johnson, and thank you. But I think the quarter cent sales tax was originally envisioned for a couple of projects, including the courts. And the courts was sold as the priority project. That was my recollection. I was only a, what, behind the year, six-year-old attorney at the time. And then it got bumped down the line because of administrative decisions. I see the current language in the backup document as indicating that's exactly what's going to occur again, and we're not solving the problem. We're growing very rapidly as a county, not as rapidly as we once heard, but we're still growing. The population's still ticking upwards, and there will be additional judges added on in a few years. It's constitutionally required, and we have to accept that reality. And I'd rather deal with the big nut, because when we deal with the big nut, we can take care of the little nuts much easier. And so that's my first comment. So, but along the lines of what you're suggesting, let's decide on number one. I would make a motion that the Board of Supervisors identify the construction of either a remodeled or new court facility or some combination of those two, be listed as our first priority, that no other priorities are to go forward until work commences on that new construction or remodel, that we direct county administration to take all necessary steps in order to evaluate multiple feasibility studies or exams as to what would work in cooperation and with the approval of the courts, the sheriff's department, and the county attorney's office to make sure all vest actors are vested in this decision and to remove the balance of these items from our agenda until such time as that report is brought back to this board.
I'll second that motion. If I could add a portion of that, Supervisor Moss. We need to allocate not to exceed $50,000 for the evaluation of the law and justice on the existing county properties in the downtown area, if we could add that.
I would amend my motion to add that language, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm very much in support of having the Law and Justice Center located downtown next to our historical existing courthouse. I think it would help vitalize the downtown area. I think it could be something Mojave County could really be proud of. It could be more of a majestical court setting with a nice courthouse or courtyard. Having spent eight years in the Kingman Justice Court in a modular building, I've experienced the smallness and the need for growth within just the justice courts. I've also been in the Superior Courts, so the court system is really cramped right now, and we're doing nothing but growing at a rapid pace. So I agree with Supervisor Moss and Supervisor Watson. And I am very much in support of doing a feasibility study and getting on with this and getting it built.
Okay, anything else?
Madam Chair, obviously I'll be voting against this, but I believe we've spent millions of dollars on the court systems over the years to everybody else's, other departments' detriment. I'm not saying that we don't need money for the courts. I'm saying that maybe we should be looking at expanding the services that are available in the cities of Bullhead and Lake Havasu. La Paz County has one judge who does everything, where we have specialty judges in Mojave County. I wish that we would be expanding the services available to residents of Bullhead and Havasu. That's all I have to say.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I think what Supervisor Johnson suggested, which was expanding services in Lake Havasu and Bullhead, is a very laudable and noble idea, and I think the county's actually done it. In the last year, I attended the opening of a new Superior courtroom in Lake Havasu. I think that was only six months ago. I believe a new Superior court building, or room anyway, is under construction in Bullhead City right now. So we're expanding those services so that people in those areas don't have to come to Kingman. The logistical difficulty is, I believe, the average daily prisoner count in our jail is 500 or over 500, or at least in that ballpark. And that means, and a lot of them don't get held for weeks or months at a time, a lot of them are in and out. They're frequent flyers, and they say hello, they say goodbye. And they need access to justice, and when you have 500-plus people knocking on your door every day, we kind of have to put the court facility, at least a lot of the court facility, where the customers are at. And unfortunately, those customers are wearing orange uniforms in downtown Kingman. So, and I... But I do agree that we need to look at expanding as time goes on Bullhead and Lake Havasu's system. But I... Right now, I think, based upon my knowledge of the numbers, and I think maybe either Kip Anderson or Judge Gertler can either approve or disapprove or correct me if I'm wrong, that the two facilities in Lake Havasu and Bullhead are meeting the existing case filings in those two cities. The issue is Kingman now. Kingman's the critical impact point that we have.
Okay.
And can I ask permission for Judge Gertler or for Kip to come down and tell us what he thinks on what I said? Because I don't want to speak for... I gave my understanding of the data, not necessarily that my understanding is correct.
May please the chair, members of the board, council, and staff. The number-one priority of the court has always been to construct the new courthouse in Kingman. However, to do that, Mr. Anderson and I sat down at the very start and determined that we would not have the finances in the county to build a new courthouse with all of the Superior Court judges that we would need, let alone the Justice Court. It was much cheaper and more economical to add on to Lake Havasu City and to Bullhead City, reduce the construction costs, because those renovation costs were much less per square foot than the cost of new construction. So in addition, that had the wonderful benefit of also providing greater access to the citizens in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. With the two judges that we have in Lake Havasu City, with the soon-to-have two Superior Court judges that we will have in Bullhead City, we will have more than sufficient judicial officers to handle those cities in the foreseeable future. Indeed, it gives us the opportunity to add the specialty courts. We are 15 to 20 years behind in drug courts in Mojave County. We have a drug court in Kingman that has been up and running for three years now. We're going to expand the drug court to Lake Havasu City. We will be expanding the drug court to Bullhead City when, in fact, that courtroom becomes available on a full-time basis. So we will have the ability to handle the cases. We will have the ability to expand the specialty courts in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. But the need, as Supervisor Moss has stated, has always been and remains here in Kingman. You know, I was somewhat taken aback two weeks ago when Mr. Anderson and I were called to a meeting with Mr. Hendricks, and county administrator Hendricks first passed this idea on to us. You know, it's hard to live with the concept that you've been living with for three years and said, you know, "Would you look at change?" Well, our comments essentially were to the extent of, "We do not want to have the court project pushed back, and we're concerned with the additional cost." However, if you look at the report, I think the cost would be the same if we look at placing the court in the downtown area as compared to the administrative complex here. It's going to run, you know, $500,000, give or take, to take down the armory. Well, that's a similar cost to take down Arnold Plaza. If we take down the armory, the report indicates that we're going to need a $2 million warehouse for the document repository for Carol Meyer and all the recorder's documents. Well, that's essentially what's probably going to cost, I estimate, the removal of the jail, of being a million and a half to $2 million. It appears to the court that this is a zero-sum game. If the board decides that they want it in downtown Kingman, then in that event, it does not appear that the costs are going to be any different. The benefits to the county and to the city of Kingman are apparent with respect to placing it around the old courthouse. I mean, the old courthouse is an exceptional-looking building. The problem is the inside. And most people that come to the courthouse see the beautiful ceremonial courtroom where Judge Williams is at, but they don't see the sewer pipes that are exposed over the people that are working downstairs in the clerk's office. They don't see the people that have an office that was in a vault. The long and the short of it is, we believe that taking the courthouse around the existing courthouse will have significant benefits to the county and to the city of Kingman. We do have concern with respect to the transport of prisoners from the jail. However, we believe that we can accommodate some of those problems by creating with the new design a Sally Port that would turn around and access off of Pine Street. The concern that we do have, again, also is that this matter not be pushed back. And if we are going to go forward with this proposal, we do want the National Center for State Court to be able to go ahead and prepare a new design. They have indicated that they could have new designs for us with at least two or three options within two to three months. We do have a quote from them, and I appreciate the motion being amended to increase the cost to $50,000 to cover the cost of that report and design concept. We have a quote from the National Center for State Courts that will run us $35,000. If we are going to go forward with this process, I would further ask the board's permission that the county, and if not the county, the courts, seek the abandonment of a portion of Pine Street, because the concept would be to take the court, the new courthouse, and the existing parking lot that would be east of the existing courthouse in the original jail. And the building would go back across Pine Street, be where the jail is currently located, and then follow along the backside of the existing courthouse. located, and then follow along the backside of the existing courthouse. And that's where County Administrator Hendricks was referencing, that we would be able to build a wonderful courtyard to help accentuate the new courthouse. However, that's going to take the cooperation of the city of Kingman. And if the city of Kingman is not willing to abandon Pine, then in that event, this whole concept ends up not being pursued. You know, I'm not sure how the city of Kingman will react to that. I would think that the city of Kingman would be very happy to see Arnold Plaza removed. That would provide appropriate parking for the new courthouse. I would think that they would like to see the jail removed. I mean, these are eyesores, they're white albatrosses for the county. I don't know how many times we can try and sell them and not get them sold. So, I think it would redevelop an area that, within downtown Kingman, that would be beneficial, not only for the county, but the city of Kingman. But if they are not willing to abandon Pine, and I think we need to know that sooner rather than later, we're somewhat spinning our wheels. So, you know, I took this matter to the judges at the judges' meeting. We did not have unanimous vote, but I would tell you that it was an overwhelming majority to approve this concept, if that is the Board's pleasure. And if we can have the National Center provide us with a new design, we can seek the abandonment of Pine, and we would like to move up the retention of an architect to late 2015 rather than 2016, as referenced in the report. So, provided that those concerns are addressed, and in that event, you will have the full support of the court with placing the new courthouse in the downtown area.
Okay. Thank you very much. I was thrilled to hear about this new idea, because my big problem was, again, the abandonment of yet another county building. Downtown Kingman would be sort of a ghost Mojave County soon if we didn't do something like that. So, I just kind of recently heard, I didn't actually get all of this from the background material, so Supervisor Moss sort of kept me up to speed. So, I'm very happy to hear that.
Chairman Angus, that does raise another issue. I mean, currently, the court utilizes the city of Kingman to conduct grand jury. We perceive, the court perceives, that we can utilize the old courthouse for something other than just ceremonial, you know, drug court graduations or swearing in of officials. We could utilize the old courtroom for grand jury. There is office space that is still very viable within the old courthouse.
Can you use that?
Absolutely. As an example, to cut costs, I mean, Mr. Timko, every budget year tells us, "Cut costs." We moved our mediation center out of a building that we were renting, we placed them in the probation department. You know, probation certainly can utilize that area. We could remove our mediation services and put them back in the old courthouse. There are things that the court could accomplish with probably not much of any renovation. I think that there are items that certainly would need to take, you know, some significant dollars and cents with respect to renovation. However, there are other items, such as the grand jury and the old courtroom, that we can use it as-is. We could use some of the office space that is currently, you know, housing judicial assistants and judges and put in mediators. We could do the mediations in the courtroom, rather than, you know, at the probation department. So, there are uses that we could immediately put to effect in the old courthouse with the courts moving into a new court.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. I think we're getting far off. If we're going to go with, depending on the vote that comes out, if we go ahead with the courtroom, I think it needs to be brought back to us for the decision with the, but we need to look at the fact that we also have a jail over here that was, that was built. We got the land where there's room there to build a court, that's something we should look at, where those would be right next to the jail. As far as downtown Kingman, Mojave County is not an economic driver for Kingman. Our people go home at 5:00 at night, we're not bringing sales tax or anything else to them. That land is better off sold and the historic building given to a historical society where they can make some money for the city of Kingman. They live off sales tax, but, but I just think that we should, you know, bring those items back where the location.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may, I'd like to add to the motion, if I could, and that would be to seek the abandonment of the portion of Pine Street from the city of Kingman.
I'll amend my motion to add that requirement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Number 38, Discussion on Possible Action, Accept the Horizon 6 Trail Report. For Discussion on Possible Action, continued from our April 7, 2014, May 5, 2014, and May 19, 2014. And I just, I want to say something. The reason, I believe we were prepared to vote on this at our May 19 meeting, and I asked for it to be extended. There were just a few more things I wanted, and I believe we were ready to take a vote there, that everybody had made up their minds, because I believe we have heard, we have heard all the arguments for, I know you guys have been sitting here, so we have some letters that came in about it, against it, and I know you guys have been sitting here, and I want to give you the opportunity to speak, but I'm, I'm just requesting that, you know, because we have heard everything over and over and over, unless there is some late-breaking new stuff that we haven't heard. But I do, you've been here, and I do want to give you that opportunity, but just please keep in mind that we really have heard, I believe, everything there is to know, both sides. So, first off, we have, we'll go with Mary Van Roy first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Angus, the supervisors, and staff. I do have some packets I wanted to give each of the supervisors, because we have more letters that just came in this week. I think there's about 17 letters in there. And of course, I guess I don't have to repeat that the 300 and, I don't know, 380 people, I believe, signed this petition. And I also was in Cave Creek, and they have the sign-up, oops, I don't know if you can see that, all over Cave Creek, and they're very horse-friendly, and I'd love to see this in Donkey Acres. So, that's something new. I'm inviting all the citizens of Mojave County to drive out and see the project. We sold the acre at 4036 Blue Canyon Road, so that's a good place to start and see what we've, what we're asking for, and then drive up Blue Canyon, come down Gold Springs, and then you'll see there are risk factors of not being able to use the traditional trail area. And I know they're worried about liability, and we have some paperwork in there about the legal issues, and I know a letter was sent to Bill Ekstrom about that. And then, cost was the other thing. The easiest way would be to take the locks off the gates so we could just open and close them, but that's probably not going to happen. And I'm hoping that when they auction the house at 4039 Littlefinger Road, if maybe 15% of those proceeds that were already spent on our flood channel, the millions of dollars that was spent, could come back to us and do the extra fencing that the county's asking for. We're also asking to just work whatever parts will work. I mean, we may not get everything we want, but I think if, if residents of Horizon 6, who are very supportive of this safety issue that we have with recreational trail, and we're just hoping somebody gives us the, the option to keep, continue to work with staff, and maybe we can work somewhere on some parts of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Geneva? No, you don't, okay. And Catherine?
Thanks to see you guys again. I was here at the, the April meeting, I believe it was, and I was a little excited when we got done talking about what we were talking about, and then all of a sudden, the engineer guy came up, and he basically said, "We wanted to ride in places that we, that was not an issue. We did not want to ride down in this canal that was built. That is a safety issue, big time." We did provide you now with the Arizona statutes on the laws of the equine, and we're just worried that we're going to get landlocked in, in the future. This is going to create problems, and I was hoping that maybe someday, that the private people now, that their property is backed up right next to the canal, we can work with them, or work with any of the private people. I personally dedicated about a five-foot trail on the side of my house that was useless. I would have had to put thousands and thousands of dollars and fill dirt to level it out. And I thought, "I don't want to do that. What can I do?" So, I basically made a trail on the side of my house that doesn't interfere, they doesn't, they don't come up by my home or anything, but it's just wasted property that I allow an access through Lakeview Road to Gold Springs Road. And then, the problem is, there is a lot just behind my house that is owned by a private party. I don't know who they are, they never come up, they're not building on it. We just continue to make access down to Gold Springs. They could come and build someday and say, "Okay, no more." So, we're just trying to maybe establish some type of a trail system. It doesn't naturally, exactly have to be on the canal. We can do a loop through private party properties, and I didn't know if maybe some private people, if we approached them the right way, and we get your support to, to say, "Hey, you know, go ahead, try, see what you can do." And talk to some of these people, I don't know, is there tax breaks or anything for people that, if they volunteered a wasted area of their property, that's a natural runoff or something, to be able to say, "Well, we can't use that property anyway, because there is so much natural, and you're not going to stop Mother Nature. She's going to come through there, and she's going to plow down, they can put all the dirt and rocks they want. The next flood, it's going to happen again." So, we just want to ride our horses through there. People are worried about horse manure. There's a lot of stuff that, that I think some people are very uneducated, and that's why we live there, and we would like to keep it open. And just want a little support with you guys if we need some help, or how to do something, if you could kind of give us an idea, once in a while.
Thank you very much. Okay. For the record, we did receive a letter, I'm not going to read it. It was, it's an objection letter to opening up the Mockingbird Wash Flood Control Channel for public access. We're landowners and full-year-round residents of 4039 Blue Canyon Road and have been so for 14 years. We love the quiet, peaceful, private area in which we live. This is where we live, work, and homeschool our children, and I just wanted to make sure this gets in for the record. Anyone else want to say anything that hasn't been said?
I have a comment. I, I just want to say that these, these homeowners have horses, they've had horses before the flood control channel was built, they had access to the public lands, and they enjoy their horses, and I appreciate that, and I would like to see them be able to continue riding their horses from their home corrals to the public lands. So, I don't know exactly how the county can facilitate that, but if there's a way we can do it without too much expense, I'm in support of that.
I will say this, I think there's an easy way we can do it, and I think it's actually a financial and ethical responsibility that we do something. I have been out there, I don't know, maybe a half dozen times, and I've been up and down those long hill, high hills. I've been in that flood control channel with various county employees, including Poor Nick, who had to walk with me the entire length of it in a very hot day. And that flood control channel on the elevated flat portions is a very safe place to be. That road is not a safe place to be. That road, for pedestrians and bicyclists and horseback riders, is, it's a death trap, and someone will be killed eventually. And that's where I get my financial and ethical statement that we need to do something. I also think doing something is a very cost-effective thing. We don't want dirt bikes and ATVs in that channel. We want, I want pedestrians and bicyclists and horseback riders, and there are horsegates, which are throughout the state of Arizona at various places, that go in, and they're very cost-effective, and they're very inexpensive. And I think with a very little effort, that entire length of the area, or at least the vast majority of it, can be opened up to the public to non-motorized vehicular and horseback rider access. And so, I don't want to belabor it, Supervisor Angus is correct to a very large degree, but I would make a motion that we instruct county staff to take all reasonable and necessary steps to open up the Horizon 6 trail to non-motorized, to non-motorized public access.
I'll second the motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. It looks like this is passed. Number 40, Discussion on Possible Action, Update on the Status of the Revised Merit Rules.
Madam Chair, I placed this on the agenda, it was supposed to be brought back to us. I just wonder if there was an update on, on our merit rules, where we stand.
Oh, okay. Excuse me, I apparently have skipped 39.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm very sorry. So, we're going back to number 39, Discussion on Possible Action, Approve the Legislative Proposal from Mojave County's 2015 Legislative Program, Allowing for Additional Items to Be Brought to the Board for Consideration. And I think that this is, we talked about this, about our items for the CSA Legislative Summit in October, and after, I had realized that, I had forgotten, last year Supervisor Brotherton had brought up an issue about abatement, and, and right now, we are low men on the totem poles when properties go into lien and getting, getting payment for liens, that we put a lien on it, and we, we championed it, and they took it up, CSA took it up, and, but unfortunately, as we all know, Supervisor Brotherton became ill and was not able to be the advocate down in Phoenix that we were hoping. So, in honor of her, I want to bring this up, and I will, I will be in charge, and I will advocate for it, and I'd like to bring it back before the CSA Summit.
Madam Chair, I think that's a wonderful idea, and you're to be lauded for that, and also, I think the Mojave County taxpayer would be very appreciative if you're successful. And so, with that, I move that we approve item 39 to include the nuisance, abatement, and liens to be brought to our legislative summit.
Second the motion.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, number 40. Discussion on Possible Action, Update on the Status of the, oh, of the Revised Merit Rules.
Madam Chair, I brought this back, because I thought we were supposed to, it was supposed to be brought back to us. Is there any timeline, or can staff give us a timeline when this will be brought back for?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I believe it was postponed by the Board of Supervisors, so it's at the Board's discretion on when they would like to see it again. I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, at the Board's discretion with no specific time for bringing this merit rules back. So, I know it's a mountain of a document to digest, and we could certainly structure anything that the Board so chooses to structure, to try to work our way through this. One of the things that I would suggest is that if, if you all would like to see it back before the Board, and you want, and definitively would like some revisions, what we could do is, staff could accept different comments from each individual Board member regarding the merit rules, and we'll try to take another shot at bringing back a proposed modified version from the one that was originally submitted to the Board.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I have actually waded through that, I think it's a 160-page document. I did read it all, and I do believe it's not ready to be acted upon, and I would like to propose that we give staff an additional time to make some revisions. And I will say that my revisions would include language along the lines of, that restructures, minor adjustments, regardless of what the justifications for, pay adjustments, reclassifications, all must be brought to the Board of Supervisors for approval. I would also suggest that the, to the extent permissible, and we'd have to rely upon Mr. Ekstrom for that, because I've looked at this particular statute, and I have question marks in my mind as to its applicability. But that House Bill 2571 that was passed in 2012 and made law, to the extent that flexibility can be incorporated within the merit rules regarding employment status, that that also be looked at. Those are suggestions that I'm, that I'm throwing out there now for public guidance. I will say that I will probably have many others that will come via private email, but I do think this is going to be another 30 to 60 days, because the volume of corrections that are needed, I was not lying when I say just about every page I have has
I was not lying when I say just about every page I have has ink on it. Just about. There's a few that did not.
At some point, do we have a workshop on this after all these things are incorporated? Is that something that makes sense?
Madam Chair, I would think that, I don't agree with, we should send Hendricks or Administrator Hendricks or stuff. We should be done an open board meeting where we all discuss it and we get through, and it takes a while, it takes a while. Or you can say, "Hey, we'd like to make these." Like if Supervisor Moss has a long list, he could say, "I'm putting this in the public record. Can you come back and address it?"
I can add to that list right now. I think I've given three.
Why don't we just do it in a workshop environment? We can all do it.
I'd really have a board meeting.
You want to do it in a board meeting?
You can have a workshop.
Well, then we should probably do that.
Well, it's going to be long. I mean, I don't foresee this as being a small thing. If we're going to do it in public and do it right, then I would say a workshop would make more sense.
All right. And if we're going to do the workshop, Madam Chair, I think we should do it sooner rather than later so that we get this processed and some guidance to the county administration. And I want to apologize to Mr. Hendricks and the county staff. It was only this last week that I finished my review, and you've had it in my possession for three months, and I should have got something back to you sooner. It might have avoided some issues. But when it comes down to it, I do think there's things that we need to address and to talk about, and maybe an hour of time. I don't think it'll take more than an hour. I mean, I think we're, my suspicion is I think that we have a lot of the same opinions as to adjustments, so I don't think it would take that much time. So a short workshop?
Yeah. I would prefer a workshop just on this where we could really, because we do have, this is the first time in how many years the merit rules have been addressed?
It's been a good problem since I've been on the board.
Okay. So it's not a small thing. I think we have an opportunity to really make some changes, and a lot of things have changed in the world and in the way people, the way county governments do business and in our county itself. So we don't take it lightly. I want the staff to know that we don't take it lightly and the employees. So we're going to work hard to make this something that could go on for years to come.
All right. Madam Chair, then, I'd make a motion that we table item 40 and direct staff to schedule a workshop within the next 30 days so that we can discuss the merit rules and give staff clear direction as to how we want those merit rules to be drafted and structured.
Very good. I'll second that. Okay. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number 41A, Discussion on Possible Action, This is a reconsideration of item 29 on the August 4, 2014 Agenda, which was to accept the holiday change to include the county being closed the Friday after Thanksgiving in exchange for non-observance of Columbus Day as a paid holiday.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion for reconsideration.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion for discussion of the holiday change.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, this is my fault. For some reason I let that slip by me. Obviously, I believe that holidays are set for a special reason, and it's not for us changing them to give a Friday off after Thanksgiving for the benefit of our employees. I believe that the public has a right to expect us to be open on certain business days, and I don't think it's up to us to change what holidays we will and will not recognize. That was all I had, and I missed it last time, sorry.
If I can ask Mr. Hendricks about the Columbus Day holiday? And this is just to clarify things in my mind, Mike, because I do very much approve of taking the Friday after Thanksgiving off. We've done it in my own office for 19 years. I don't think anybody, I think that it has to be a very, very light workday if it's any sort of workday for county staff because of that reason. My concern was the Columbus Day holiday. In reading the merit rules, I noticed that county employees who worked on Columbus Day and any other federal holiday got additional monies paid to them. Am I right about that?
Classified employees, if they work a holiday. I'm not sure how the sheriff's office, off the top of my head, handles that because they're required to work considerable, you know.
Supervisor Moss, I believe they get credit for the holiday and then they're able to take a holiday.
Got it, got it. And I did see some reference to the credit system and all that in there. My concern was that if we're sending, I have to say this, we're bringing people in to work Columbus Day because they're going to get the Friday after Thanksgiving off. That's the plan that's been proposed. Does that mean when the county staff comes in to work Columbus Day, they're going to get that additional time or additional credit?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, what I understand is the statute was changed to allow the county to declare, you know, their official holidays, and they could change Columbus Day out for the day after Thanksgiving. So the day after Thanksgiving becomes Mojave County's official holiday, and we would end up paying the, for those that worked on that day, we'd end up paying overtime for those individuals. And Columbus Day subsequently to your decision not to declare it a holiday would not be a holiday.
So, I mean, I'm sorry, Mike, that's most my concern because I think we need to clarify, and I disagree with, I think Supervisor Johnson about switching, not switching the holidays, but I do wish that we need to have clarified that employees who work Columbus Day are not getting paid time and a half, they're not banking their additional credits for time off. It's a regular workday.
So that you're not hearing that? That's what I believe. If the chair would allow, could we have our HR director come down and?
Sure. But while he's coming down, let me ask something. Is Columbus, Columbus Day is a federal holiday, right? So if people come to work, there's, other things are closed, right? And I kind of, you know, I didn't think of it that way, but you're right. It's a holiday for something. And I would hate to think that Mojave County is now not going to celebrate Columbus Day. I mean, Columbus Day, so that we can have a four-day holiday after Thanksgiving. I mean, I kind of agree with Supervisor Johnson there. I hadn't really thought of it that way, but I think that it's a big mistake.
Supervisor Angus, I think we should call it Leaf Erickson Day.
Caught me, poor. Okay. Shoot.
Supervisors, according to the statute, at least how I interpret it, is you are switching the holiday from Columbus Day to the day after Thanksgiving, and so the Columbus Day would not be paid at time and a half or anything on that day. It would shift to the day after Thanksgiving.
It would just be a regular day?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think the presiding judge is trying to say something.
Again, may it please the chair and the board, with the court HR system, we would conceivably have different days off. The court would have Columbus Day off, and we would be at work because we really do not look at a four-day break for court hearings as being a very good option or alternative. However, we think that we should be consistent with what the county does. The problem that we have, given the fact that this came up so quick, is that we have a number of employees that probably have already taken the Columbus Day weekend and made plans, and so if this was changed by the court, they would effectively have to take PTO when they had already made their plans to be gone. And so what the court looked at doing is if, in fact, you're going to move the holiday till after Thanksgiving, then in that event, we would follow suit next year. But we would still have concern with the fact that the courts would be closed essentially for four days. Now, that's not to say the court closes because we always have a court that is open, you know, for orders of protection, you know, for prisoners that are arrested and brought in and need to have their, you know, initial appearance within 24 hours. The point, I guess, is that if we're open the day after Thanksgiving and it's a holiday, you're going to have county attorneys, PTO, LDO, legal advocates that may be in court, and they're going to be getting paid a time and a half because that's your holiday, but we're going to be open at least this year for that holiday. So again, that is one of the reasons the court thinks that we need to be consistent with the county so that we're not in that particular, you know, problem area. As far as the court is concerned, again, they took this to a vote of the judges, and our preference was actually to be open the day after Thanksgiving, but if it is the board's decision to change the holiday, in that event, we will follow suit, but we will do so in fiscal year 2015.
Thank you. You know, again, I want to, in 1492, when Columbus sailed the ocean blue, he didn't do it so that, you know, we'd have a floating holiday someday, and I think you're right. I think it's, we have holidays for a reason, and it shouldn't be just to make it convenient for us. So with that, I need a motion.
I would make a motion to deny the change in the holidays.
I'll second that.
My only comment is many of my ancestors were already here.
Okay. We'll make a holiday for you. All right. We have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Back to the way it was. And with that, we're adjourned.